Everyone, welcome to the City of Laconia Regular Planning Board Meeting of November 10th, 2015. It being 6:30 in the evening, we can begin our formal agenda. The first thing is Kalina Graham is our Recording Secretary for this evening. And would you please do a roll call?
Charlie Sinclair.
Here.
Edward Donas.
Here.
Mike Moni.
Here.
Yale.
Yes.
Jake Tippmann.
Yeah.
David Evans.
Here.
Will Cantardo.
Yep.
John Richards.
Here.
Hamilton McQueen.
Here.
Mike Del Vicchio.
Here.
And Chair Richardson.
And sitting at the table with us tonight are our Director of Planning, Shander Saunders, and the Assistant Director of Planning, Brandy Logan. We have one regular member of the Planning Board not with us this evening, and so trying to remember how to take turns on this. I think it's Charlie's turn to vote, if you would be...
I don't know that it is.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Well, I was at the last two meetings, and I voted at both of those. I was not here at the emergency meeting.
Yeah, we didn't vote.
If that wasn't an emergency meeting, whatever you call it, special meeting.
Yeah, that was. Well, then it has to be Michael. Would you be the voter tonight? We're gonna have to keep track, I think.
Someone's gotta do it.
Yeah.
I keep track.
Okay.
I say we flip for it.
No, you can't do that. The RSAs don't allow for flipping.
There's a no-flipping RSA.
No-flipping RSA, yeah. Okay, presentations, the first thing on our agenda. Addition of back language to the Wetlands and Water Quality Ordinance, Chapter 235-17-E2 from the Conservation Commission. We have us with us this evening, the very, very learned Chairman of the Conservation Commission, Mr. Dean Anson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will try to keep this very clear, because it can be a little complicated, but back in 2012, the regulation stated that within a 30-foot, 30 feet of public waters and public rivers, there was to be a 30-foot wetland buffer. So back in 2012, before there was an amendment to the regulations, there was a 30-foot buffer. In 2012, we made a recommendation that that be changed, and we recommended that it be changed to a 75-foot buffer. And it was, and it was changed so that it only named certain brooks. For instance, it named Derkey Brook, Jewett Brook, Black Brook, Langley Brook, Mellinger Brook, and then some other brooks that are designated A through I. So what it did is it only specified certain water bodies, rivers, streams, that would have a 75-foot buffer. What that did is it made the smaller streams so that they did not have to have a buffer. So the recommendation that the Conservation Commission is making tonight is that we change the Laconia Wetlands Conservation and Water Quality Ordinance, Section 235-17-E, to include those smaller water bodies. And there, we have specific reasons why we're making that recommendation. And the reasons are that these smaller water bodies are the way that stormwater gets moved from upland areas down to larger water bodies, to these brooks. And when that happens, if we don't have a buffer, then we don't have necessarily vegetation to protect the soils, to hold the soils in place, to prevent flooding, and to basically prevent things like what happened at Union Cemetery when we had that rainstorm recently, where there was flooding, and the surface was damaged because soils were eroded, and the cemetery wound up spending over $50,000 to do repairs. They had to replace some piping, they had to do some repairs because the vegetation had all been cut down too close to the bottom of the stream. So the recommendation that we're making, so that's, so let me just give you a couple of other examples. In the consultant's report for the geomorphological investigation of Jewett Brook, DeBois and King pointed out in Table 1 that there were stressors that were impacting Jewett Brook. And one of those that had a major impact was having buffers less than 25 feet. And what that was doing is it caused streams naturally meander. And if we don't give them space within some sort of a buffer so they can naturally meander, they will undercut banks, cause damage to property, and cause flooding. So is that, am I being clear here? Michael?
Yeah, can you define a stream to some degree?
Sure.
Because I don't know if that's clear.
Okay. And you know, that's a really good point, because what we did, what Scott did, is Scott looked up the definition of intermittent and seasonal streams, perennial streams, and he used the definition that New Hampshire DOT and New Hampshire DES use, which are?
Which are in your packets.
Okay, so a perennial stream, a perennial stream, it's on page 1-3, and its best management practices for routine roadway maintenance activities in New Hampshire. DOT, a water course that flows for either nine months in the previous year or all year in six of the previous 10 years. It contains a stream bed, scoured channel, and flows within the banks of the stream.
Yeah, but my, I thought what you were asking is, what's the definition, probably by water flow, depth, width, I mean, you said small stream, that's very nebulous to me.
You said seasonal and intermittent. He said seasonal and intermittent as well, so...
Yeah, I mean, but, right.
Is it so past that you find in the woods?
Are you distinguishing those streams for impact on what you're talking about? I mean, you talked about the cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
And what would have prevented that? Would this prevented that?
Yes. That, well, that's what, that's, we're hypothesizing.
Oh, you're hypothesizing, that doesn't mean it's true, that that would, I mean, you was, I was saying...
Okay, so we know that it, that the way it is now did not work.
Well, was, well, this worked, and you don't know that either.
So let me back up for a second. So I just want to point out that the language that the Conserva, actually, two things, really quick. I just noticed that my copy, your definition should be two-sided. Okay, that might be part of the problem.
I looked on this side for, and I saw mulch and other things, but I did not see stream.
So we did, we, there was a copying error. We do have definitions for both perennial and intermittent. Brandy will go make those copies. The second thing I just want to point out is what the Conservation Commission is attempting to do is to put back in the ordinance the language that has been there since 2000, all the way up to 2012, when it was inadvertently really removed by the change. And I don't think we all realize that by removing public waters and public streams, it meant that these perennial and intermittent streams would not be protected, so...
When you say inadvertently, you mean, was it, was it a planning board decision that we made back in 2012 that changed this?
Yes, it was a Conservation Commission recommendation.
Recommendation?
That's right.
And the Planning Board adopted the changes?
The Planning Board recommended to the Council, and the Council adopted, yep.
Okay, and what happened was, you just sort of missed the fact that by making this change, you were eliminating the 30-foot buffer.
That's right. We were, we were eliminating any buffer on those unnamed streams.
Those perennials and intermittent streams.
Exactly.
Okay.
And so we've had several projects come through, it's come to our realization, so this is really just putting that language back in.
Okay.
Prior to...
And I don't want to, I don't want to ask the silly question, but why is it taking us three years to figure this out?
Um, I think, bec, I don't know. Why is it taking us, because we haven't had a lot of develop, new development in the recession years. Now that new development has picked up, and we've had two or three of these, we've realized, oh, wait a minute, these streams are not protected under the ordinance.
Okay.
And, and, so another example would have been what happened at the Aqua Duplex. There was water that has flowed in this latest rainstorm, because when you have, when we have a significant rain event, Scott will go out and he will check to see how different areas are doing, particularly where there's development taking place, and he has seen that there are places where the water, when it, when we get these heavy storms, and it's normally dry, the water has to go downhill somehow, and it will pick up on these...
I'm perfectly willing to accept the hypothesis.
Okay.
Because I think there's empirical evidence that supports it, that a 30-foot buffer will indeed protect to some extent. It's not going to do anything about a 500-year storm, but, but, you know, a five-year storm will survive.
And usually, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about these anomalies with these storms, which no matter what we've done in the past, whether it be the major project at Wusale, up on the hill, you know, Mr. Mahu's project, even in those conditions, we, we thought we were ahead of it, but the storms have been so torrential that we couldn't slow it down or stop it. So he had to go back and do more and more work. Understandable, but there isn't anything that we, you're talking about here that I think is really relevant to preventing or defining those streams. I mean, how do you measure the stream? In the middle, 15 feet on each side, or from the edge of it? You know, what's the impact on, on developing in, in developers? Homeowners, someone trying to put a porch in the back of their porch, in the back of their house?
Okay, so, so what we're... I'll give you an example, Bill, of how we can, we can determine a relative area to set aside. We went over, we walked a, one of our conservation easements the other day, at Bob Harrington's, and in the woods, undeveloped, there was a stream that was about maybe a foot wide. And when you...
About 30 feet from that foot-wide stream on the side.
And so when I looked at, when I stood, when I straddled the stream and I looked upstream...
Come this way, Dan.
This replaces that.
Thank you.
And I looked upstream.
This is the same, isn't it?
The, the natural area where water flowed was about 30 feet wide. Now, I'm only looking at one stream, and I'm, I'm then extrapolating, saying, you know, if you look at other streams, you might see the same type of result. So, I mean...
You're looking at one stream, you look at one stream, foot-wide, you interpret that as being a 30-foot setback on each side of that stream, 60 feet, in essence...
Correct.
For that one-foot stream.
Correct.
And everybody, you're saying to all developers, homeowners, everywhere, you're going to be held to this standard, which might not be, be significant in, in preventing what you want to happen, except that you're putting a burden on, on the homeowner or the...
Okay, so what, we're, we're not going to go back to the people that live along Jewett Brook and say, excuse me, but you have, you know, part of your yard is within that 30-foot, so you have to give up that, we're not going to do that. We're talking about...
But they're telling you can't build a porch, right?
Yeah, they're saying you can't do a building, you can't, you can't...
So the option that homeowners have is to come before you guys with a conditional use permit for impacts to that wetland buffer, that water body buffer. We see them all the time, we weigh them very carefully, based on the development and the, and the public interest, and we often allow encouragements in that.
I just feel as though this is an overreach, and I feel as though this is a slippery slope that we're on for our residents and our homeowners, for individuals. So you can put that on the record.
We had this from 2000 to 2012.
For 12 years, we, we had this.
We've had those.
Correct.
And what we're doing now is saying...
In 2012 was increase it to 75 feet, and then you added oops, because you missed out on the seasonal intermittent or perennial streams.
Correct. Right, we deleted the words "public waters" and "public rivers," or "public, um, public waters" and "public rivers," which covered that. And then when we deleted that, thinking we were trying to eliminate a confusion, we realized, whoops, we, we...
And what you said, this would all be subject to a conditional use permit...
Correct.
If there was some kind of hardship created by...
Correct.
A developer or a homeowner, or something like that.
It's not even a hardship criteria, which is the strict ZBA criteria, it's basically, is there any place else on the lot that the developer could put what he is putting, and can he mitigate for whatever loss to the natural systems is occurring because of the impact? And flood storage, pollution control, that, those type of impacts.
The assumption is that, but what you just said, and I'm not sure that's factual, the impact that he will have, and I, I say to you, you can't say that unequivocally, that these people have an impact on that area just because they want to build a porch over it, or they want to get close to that 30-foot line, and there's a one-foot stream in their backyard.
So typically, in that case, we have a natural resource scientist submit a report, and they're the ones that...
So someone wants to put a deck on, they gotta go through a natural resource thing, they're gonna go through that...
That's correct.
And they gotta go through this, and, because we're talking about a stream one-foot wide, 30 feet on each side.
So don't forget that, that 30 feet is providing flood storage area, so really...
I understand what it's doing, but it, what's the, we're talking about the practicality of it. Number one, he says, I looked up at one-foot-wide stream, and, and whatever, I saw it get a little bit bigger, and there's nothing, there's nothing quantitative here that I see, nothing quantitative, except very subjective, an individual, when I looked at a stream, looked up the stream, I don't think that that's enough in my, for me, that's not enough for me to say. Do you know, that, that was a good understanding of what's taking place here.
So there are quantifying, defining factors of stream and wetland that we can bring to the next meeting.
The purpose tonight was a presentation so that we can begin to understand what the recommendation is. And what the conclusion tonight would be, would be a vote on, do we want this to come to public hearing at our next, at our next meeting? At which time it would be noticed, and all people within the City of Laconia would know that we're considering it.
Are we missing a step? If we, if we still need more information, if we were to vote to go to public hearing tonight? I mean, there's no, there's no emergency here, there's no, we gotta do it right away.
No, we could, we could.
We've got a legitimate inquiry and a request for more information about some definitional context and what we're going to be doing.
Just wanted to get to the point where people could, could talk and present testimony to us.
You just say it.
Yeah, we can bring that one.
Just a question, that's kind of tangential to what we're talking about. If my property abuts a intermittent stream, and there's this 30-foot setback, and during a rain event, there's a huge amount of erosion that takes place, and that 30-foot setback is now, the, the stream instead of being a foot-wide or two-feet-wide is now 30 feet wide, similar to what happened at Union Cemetery. What is the, the property owner's obligation to the Planning Board to go in and fix that property?
Um, that would be DES's call. There's no obligation to the Planning Board.
Uh-huh.
It would be a restoration with a DES permit. And that property owner is going to want to do that because...
It's his property.
And let me just say, so, natural resource-wise, typically, typically a one-foot area, you're, you're not typically going to get a huge washout like that, because a one-foot stream is a one-foot stream on purpose, because it's really only most of the time getting one foot of water in most storms, you know? We are getting more storms, no doubt, and I think, too, the cemetery, that wasn't a one-storm event, that was a slow kind of washout until kind of the hare broke the camel's back type of thing. But you, that person, all of that dirt that would have come loose would have impacted property owners all downstream. So DES would have been notified, that property owner would have worked with DES to restore that area to allow flood, that flood plain to function in the...
But the property owner's under no obligation to restore it?
Hmm.
It's his property.
I think DES, I think he would work, I don't think there's an obligation, I think he would work with DES. I think he would, I think DES would convince him that that's probably what he's going to want to do. He, he may be liable for property damage down the way.
Really?
Yes. If, 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 if his dirt washed out, and, I mean, probably not in a 500-year storm, because that's...
Act of God.
But that's really, that's not the exception. We got it, that's happening all the time, all these hundred, 150 years.
I don't mean to diverge from the conversation, it just occurred to me that while it's private property, we're putting public restriction on it, not only to the extent of how much we can encroach upon it towards that intermittent stream, but also if there is an event where it's damaged...
Yeah.
Is the property owner obligated? And if he's obligated, who does he have to go to? What kind of approvals does he have to obtain?
I think my thought is I'd like to bring DES in. I, in, if we look at the Anthony Drive washout, if you remember, probably, what was that, 2009 or so, that Anthony Drive washout? Where, you know, there was dirt across everyone's lawn, and through garages, and into pools, and stuff like that. You know, though, I think those property owners, they all fixed their property, the state came in and helped the city with culvert upgrades, the state came in and upgraded, I mean, there was, there was, it was a mutual help, it wasn't, it wasn't you must, you know, there was a...
But the, you, you had mentioned earlier, a property owner might be liable for downstream damage.
I think there was some lawsuits that came out of that. I can, I can double-check that...
All right.
Because I think property owners suit other property owners.
I think that was really drainage issue. That wasn't a stream that got expanded, although it was a lot of water, and it could have been up, could have been somewhere up the line somewhere. But the reality with Anthony Drive was, that was erosion, and there was, didn't have enough capability to pass it through. So what you had is you had...
Yep.
It flowing over and then eroding the road.
Right.
So that's a different, that's a different solution to this problem.
Rather than a natural water pool.
So, so let me back you up, because if we don't have a buffer, and we're allowing people to build right up to it and put culverts in, I mean, and that's what Anthony Drive was, was there's no buffer, we're going to take this stream, and we're basically going to put it in a culvert underneath the entire neighborhood. That, that was the result in a, in a big storm, was that, yeah, that the drainage was undersized, but it was because we had no control over that stretch of natural resources.
Maybe we haven't got control of a lot of areas, and maybe, maybe just a natural event that takes place, and maybe we have to acknowledge that. And we, how many little streams are we, how many one-foot streams are we talking about in the community? Can we identify how many? No, we don't know. I understand, I'm asking you a rhetorical question in nature, I guess, because I knew you knew the answer. So how many streams are affected? How many people are affected? How many property owners are affected? I mean, this is, I mean, this is something that affects many, many people. When you're telling me a one-foot-wide stream is what you're talking about, and you want 30 feet on each side, that's 60 feet because of a one-foot stream, that could be problematic. And I say, how many could be problematic streams do we have in the community? How many people are affected by this? How many people, people can't put a porch on their back porch, on their house? How many are we talking about? That's the kind of information I think we have to balance, the risk and reward kind of a thing. We have to understand that, rather than just say, the cemetery, and we just said that the cemetery was not necessarily that, that's over time, erosion, maybe it was a maintenance issue. So I don't like these, these red herrings that come up out of anywhere.
I'm not sure that we can get you those answers, I'm not sure...
No, I think, I think it's unrealistic, it's unrealistic, Bill.
It's unrealistic, it's unrealistic to say that you want someone who has a one-foot stream going near their property, or adjacent to their property, that you want 30 feet back from that, when the lot might only be 50 feet deep, or 80 feet deep.
Right, and then, and then...
You want half their property.
Then what they would do, what they would do is they would come with a, with a conditional use permit application...
But I don't, but I don't subscribe to that. I don't think that Big Brother, us, the city, should be implementing that kind of responsibility on the owner, who's just going to do something that they feel is a normal way of living. Normally, you can add a foot or two on your porch, or you could add three feet, and you're just going to get a building permit and you do it. You don't go through the, the conditional use, you don't go through having an evaluation by some expert. That's baloney, in my opinion. My opinion is, if you can tell me which streams you were talking about, and not arbitrarily streams, they're all over the place, so you don't know which ones you're talking about here, then I have a problem with that.
Okay, so, so part of the problem is going to be that you're asking for a specific stream.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking...
Let me just finish. Under natural conditions, natural conditions, a stream, a brook, a river meander, which means they move.
I understand that.
And, and so you're going to ask us to tell you which streams, and we will define it today, and in, in six months, we get, you know, a number of heavy downpours...
I'm asking you is, what is the impact on the community? That's what I'm asking you. You, you can't tell me what you're talking, three streams, or a thousand streams, or 10,000, you can't tell me that answer, because you don't know.
So again, I go back to the, to the point that this was in place between 2000 and 2012, where we had probably some of our...
We're talking about an hour moving on, forget about what was happening in the past, we're talking, moving on now, what it looks like, what the impact is, not in the past.
We had some of our most robust developments, and...
Well, we did.
People were under...
And I, and you and I know, we would be up at these sites at Mr. Mahu's project, and thank God he put that project in there, because he had the resources and the equipment to do that, okay? And move on what we asked him to do, and we'd ask him to do something, and he would respond to it, and, you know, and do a good job at it. But the markers always being changed, always being changed, and he was...
Which mark?
Up on the hill, with the, with the towers, with the water tower, all that whole development up there.
Which mark was being changed, though?
No, the waterfall, the amount of water that was, that we were enduring. The amount of water that we were enduring as a community was getting greater and greater, and we would have to go up there and look at it again, and there'd be another washout, and he, and he would, you know, agree to do certain things, and he would do it. And I was very admirable on him, and I got to give him all the credit, you can give him that for doing that. But I also say, what about the, no, that's a development. What about the individual, who's now looking at a little stream in their backyard? It might be a foot wide, but it might be below the surface by that much, so it has a probably quadruple, maybe four times the amount of volume for it to overflow, and this individual wants to put a porch in his back of his house.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we should consider, that individual would come forward with a CUP, you guys would evaluate it and decide whether or not to give him a CUP or not.
What made you choose 30, 30 feet, rather than 15 feet or 25?
Because we wanted to go back to the old regulation. The old regulation, before it was changed in 2012, said 30 feet. So now we have, what, the, the regulation was changed to specific brooks, 75 feet. Now we want to go back, and we want to make it more general, to cover these intermittent and perennial streams, which we always covered for 12 years.
What was the basis of the 30 feet from the past?
Right.
Do you have, you can't, can you tell us what the basis of that 30 feet was in the past? You want to go back to that, but yet you can't tell me what the basis of that 30 feet was in the past.
Yeah, we can look that up for the, from the 2000 minutes.
When we do the informational stuff, we can get that information...
Yep, we certainly can.
And find out why that, it's a good question, why the 30 feet was, was adopted at the beginning.
So I, I think we can sit here and we can not do anything.
Well, I mean, we got bringing, you're coming to us saying this is what you like to do, and this is the impact on the community, so that's why you're being query the way you are. Question?
Well, I, I think we just need some more information that can turn some of the definitions we got into a little bit more reality.
Okay, we can do that.
Like, when you present an idea of a meandering stream, you're like, well, it could move, like, whoa, how far can a one-foot stream move? Is that like 60 feet? So it creates images in your mind, like, that could take out half of a person's property. And that's the scary part, so maybe...
The answer is yes.
Yeah, so, maybe what we could do is, is say, let's take a look at some actual streams, and, and how they have changed in our general area. And they exist, we can, you've got pictures probably of some of these streams, you can say, this is what we're talking about. And here's a stream that's changed course three times in the last 25 years, and this is how it would impact that, so we can get a kind of, a more real-life example of what we would need to make a decision of where that 30 feet is.
And I also suggest you size it, how many streams are we talking about? How many, how many, how much, how many people are we talking about?
I mean, and you can do estimates of that over...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we have that.
You can say statistically, an area like this would, would contain X amount of streams. You have numbers like that.
Okay, so, so the, I guess, I guess this is a little frustrating in the sense that what we're doing is we are requesting, recommending that the regulation be changed back to what regulation be changed back to what it was from 2000, from 2000 to 2012. That's what we're asking. And now, in order to do that, you want us to gather more information, and I completely agree with that, I completely agree.
And give us the basis of that why it was 30, 30 feet back then.
Yeah, let him finish.
Okay, so, if, if I can't give you the number of streams, if I can't give that to you, because I'd have to get aerial photographs and I have to get, you know, topo maps, et cetera, and I'd have to figure it out.
Well...
Right, okay. If, if that's, if I can't do that...
Why can't you do that?
Let me just finish, Bill, let me finish. If I can't do that, then I'm wasting your time.
My time, yeah.
So, 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 so I'm...
I'm not wasting anybody's time. And I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that what the board is asking for is as much additional information you can give us, so that we can make an informed decision. One member of the board doesn't carry the day, you still need a majority.
No, I understand that.
So, all we're asking, as far as I get it, and you tell me if I'm wrong,
Yeah, I think you're right.
is additional, as much additional information that you can give us to inform us of the impact this decision is going to have on the people of the city of Laconia. That's what we want to know.
Okay, so, so let me see if I understand. You, you want to know, we can identify some of the streams? We could certainly do that.
Okay.
We can figure out why we originally had 30 feet?
Yeah, so, you want me to summarize?
Yeah, what the right number is.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, what the right number is. Because it used to be doesn't mean, because of climate change and everything.
That's right, because between 2000 and 2015, we've had much more severe rain events. So, you know, so that...
Like, should it be 45 feet? I don't know, if, if we're just trying to restore a number. And you've got probably different people that here than, that may have been there in 2012. And you're asking us to reconsider something. I think it'd be valuable to actually reconsider it and not just have an arbitrary number.
I, I agree, I agree.
So, if it, and I, I appreciate the difficulty in identifying...
That doesn't, that needs, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
No, 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 I understand. But it's difficult, because they're intermittent. So, you, there's, I don't know how you could identify them all. If they're intermittent, how do we know if someone comes in, they want to put a deck on their house, that there's an intermittent stream in their yard, and we're going to hold them to a 30-foot setback?
I think that goes back to the definitions, and there are, there are signs in the landscape that will, that will tell you that at some point, water came through here.
But you don't know if it was nine months or six months?
That's right.
And if it was for the previous year or the past 10?
That's right, so we're going to rely on the history of the property owner, we're going to make an educated, our best educated guess, knowing that if we, if we guess wrong and infrastructure is built too close, that person risks some property damage. So, we do the best we can, the same thing with the wetland line. The wetland line, we do the best we can, based on the, you know, the criteria. There are certain criteria for wetlands, certain criteria for these, yeah.
I, I think we have to understand that we are talking about nature, we're talking about weather, we're talking about something that you cannot quantify, you can't measure it in inches of water pressure, flow, or whatever else, and be accurate about it. The engineering principles kind of go out the window. You have to have a lot of judgment call, and that's probably the best we can do.
And Edwin?
Yeah, I, I was just curious, the, you know, I heard we, that the previous board inadvertently made that change. How do I know they, yet again, a part of me saying, they may intentionally have left that out. I wouldn't know. Because it's taken three years to come back to ask for it again.
We can certainly grab those minutes, and we can provide those minutes from 2012 as well. I was here, I worked with the Conservation Commission on that, and with the previous Assistant Planner, and I can tell you, it was not the intention of the Conservation Commission to, to inadvertently leave out these streams. I'm not, I mean, I don't know, I can provide you minutes from the Planning Board as well, and I'm not sure what their thought process was.
Charlie?
I just have a question, Shannon, during that time period of 2000 to 2012, if there, were there any property owners that suffered because of those regulations that were in place then? In other words, did you have people that come up and wanted to do stuff and they were, you know, they were just flat-out rejected because of those boundaries? Or is that something you can't find out? I'm just curious, because, you know...
No, so, anyone that wanted to, an impact, would have filed a conditional use permit, it would have been heard before the Planning Board. So, we can pull how many CUP applications we had during that timeframe and how many were denied.
I'd be, I'd be real curious to see that. Whether I can vote or not, I'd be curious to see it, so...
I think the, the other thing that's important is that the types of damage that we've seen, and I'm only using Jewett Brook as an example, because I know that it was studied, I know that, that Luke Powell went out there with DuBois and King and talked to individual homeowners about the problems that they had, they had experienced as a result of heavy, heavy rain events and the stream cutting through their yards. I mean, it was up against part of their yard anyway, and it cut through and washed out areas, so...
But Jewett Brook is not a one-foot stream, I mean, that's the difference.
I know, I, I'm only...
I don't understand how you can bounce that off, make it, you know, the same thing, and it really is, it's completely different, completely different. You know, and I'd like to hear from some of the engineers that do work in this, in the community, to see what they, you know, they could do it honestly, you know, that, you know, the impact on these streams, or, or what their jobs are, and whether they're doing new sites, or whatever they're doing. You know, what they feel is the impact on this, and I, and I think that's really important to know, because they're the ones that are out. They're the ones in the wood line, walking around, that, you know, and checking things out, because they got to, they're going to do engineering on it.
Well, that's the purpose of the public hearing, too, and so, I think, I think...
Well, I mean, this would be part of my, part of my thinking right now, and I think it's something that we could get to accomplishing, and, and, because the public hearing is going to be, well, we decided 10 feet, or we decided no feet, or we decided 50 feet. That's what the public hearing is about, about, we need supportive documentation, information that leads us to that number.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have one question on the Union Cemetery, was that, did that exist before 2012? Was there any development on that property? So, I mean, that, that metal brook was in exactly the same place it was when this ordinance existed, right?
Yes.
So, I, I'm going to downplay Dean's comment that these brooks move substantially.
I didn't think they moved that substantially either, but I, like, would this have washed out? Let's say that, that 30 feet stayed in there. Would you have had that exact same problem? Because was, I mean, I, I think that problem existed, and there's probably some vegetation cutting that was going on.
Right.
Maybe that had been a little bit too close prior to 2012?
So, I think, yeah, I think the problem to Union Brook is not, you know, stream dynamics are not property-specific. So, all of the upstream properties and their impact on that stream are going to cause it to move in certain directions and at certain speeds and with certain debris that may have had an impact on what happened at the Union Cemetery. So, it's not, I don't know that I can give you an answer, what, what happened at Union Cemetery to cause this and how does, is this going to stop it? Because there's so many other factors that are a piece of that.
So, that's why I think the vagueness, if that's, is, is tough.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and yes, I under, I understand that it would probably be helpful to that stream, but given even the examples, well, I would say that those all existed even when exactly this ordinance was in place. So, that did not, that would not have stopped the erosion that happened at Union Cemetery. Unless there was things upstream that were built after 2012, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, a lot of that is historic infrastructure. But we, to that point, we can certainly provide some input on, on areas that have been developed in that time period and how they weathered, you know, through some of these storms.
I think the definitions of, because we can't name all, all of these streams, and, and I, I would think that that's an impossible task, no matter what type of mapping we do.
Agreed.
So, it means that the definitions have to be really, really clear and precise. Because to Bill's point, 30 feet, that's an awful lot of land.
And it's really 60 feet.
It's really 60.
60-plus feet.
Yeah, especially if, if the stream happens to be in the middle of your property or something. It's very restrictive.
So, I just, I just want to put that 30 feet in perspective. That 30 feet would be our smallest natural resource buffer across the entire city. So, if we approve this, that 30 would be in existence. We have 50 on wetlands, we have 50 no-build whatsoever on shorelands, we have 75 on named streams and numbered streams, we have 100 on vernal pools. So, although 30 feet sounds alike a lot, in the, in the concept of natural resources and what we've done before, based on good science, 30 feet is really a very small buffer for a natural resource.
Yeah, but the impact is, is, could be very significant on a, on a homeowner.
It could, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and so, where are they, you know, where, where, why aren't we thinking to them? I mean, I know it's 30 feet, but don't forget, 30 feet is based on a one-foot stream.
Absolutely.
So, maybe that's even too much. But by what we're hearing, okay, and again, this is important to know, if that stream goes through someone's property, you're taking out 60 feet. Now, what happens if it's only 120-foot-deep lot?
Then that person would come before you guys with a CUP?
Well, the point is that that person's land is almost virtually, you know,
in the buffer.
is gone, you know, I mean, what's he got? He's got his house, and then he's got the, he's got the, the 30 feet, and he's got a stream, and then he's got another 30 feet. So, what does that do for, for farm animals and stuff like that? They can't have farm animals go near that if it's a farm, if it affected a farm property? How does that affect them?
So, to, so to answer the first part of your question, we will certainly bring how many CUPs we've brought before the Planning Board and how many have been approved versus been denied.
No, no, I'm talking about, yeah, but I'm, I'm looking at where we're going. Where we're going, where we've been is where we've been, as far as I'm concerned. Where we're going is where I'm, what I'm concerned about.
I, I understand your concern, and I, I'm anxious to get all the information that we can get before we make a decision. You guys got your work cut out for you, don't you? But it's, I'm trying to think around the city of Laconia, you know, and I've been here a while. But there aren't a lot of homeowners with streams running through their land. Now, I may be wrong, and I don't want to, I don't want to downplay what the impact could or could not be, but I think what I said is fairly accurate, so... But all that information you can give us will help, help us get down the road, yea or nay, in terms of...
Charlie, is there a state buffer?
There is not.
There's not, okay.
Not in New Hampshire, there are other states that have buffers.
So, here's the plan, then. It's, it's tied us back to the staff and the concub to, to refine this and come back to us before we take any vote to schedule any public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll be back at the next meeting.
Yeah, just move the table as to the next, to the next hearing.
Oh, we don't, I don't think we need the table, it's a presentation, it's not an application, so we can just...
And let me just ask you a question. Are we going to make, are we going to provide you with the information that you've asked for? Try to get that information together.
Yes, sir.
And then, after we do that, then you'll have a public hearing? Or you're going to have a public hearing at the same time?
No, we, we decided that there is no crisis, and, and so that to have this discussion again with this additional information would be more beneficial.
Okay, I think that that's right.
And then, following that, hopefully, we can all be in agreement, and then we schedule the public hearing to hear more.
Okay.
And after that public hearing, it does not have to be that night, but after that public hearing then, this group takes a vote as to recommend it to the City Council.
Okay.
Super.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, this is really great, yeah.
That was the presentation, there are no extensions. A continued public hearing on 61 Pendleton Road. This is continued from October 6th. Didn't we accept it at that time? We have never accepted this application?
No, I don't think so.
Well, then, I would like to ask the, the Planning Director, is this application fully complete, ready for public hearing?
It is.
Given that, I would like to have a motion from the board to accept the application for, so we can proceed with public hearing.
So, move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Then the motion is accepted unanimously, and therefore, I open the public hearing at 15 minutes past 7:00. And we first have the applicant, who is represented, and the representative will identify himself, please. Santa Claus?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members Stephen Smith, Steve Smith and Associates.
Steve, do you want us to grab the board so you can post it up?
I don't know, we'd be blocking everybody.
That's true.
You've got more members than I expected, I didn't bring enough documents, I can see that.
Well, then, you're just rejected.
Unprepared, I guess. You want the board to like, put a plan up?
Please, they have copies of the...
Yeah, we have copies.
I have other copies, too, but I usually pull...
Yeah, why don't we pull it forward?
The City Council would blow out that wall.
Is there a typographical man? Put a mezzanine up here so all the members can sit along the table. In a lounge, that'd be good. Water flow.
Very valid, very valid. They're very valid. Yeah, this is about the third time.
This is about the third time. I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to have a continuance from last month. After 40 years, I finally realize how to get on first. Nice to have a continuance and come back the next month.
Don't think you're going to get away with this on a regular basis, Steve.
I have a feeling I'm not. I'm here tonight representing John and Jacquin Remington on, on Beechwood Cluster Subdivision at 61 Pendleton Road. And most of you, or many of you know, I've been in here on many occasions for this particular cluster subdivision. We're here tonight asking for an amendment, and we were in here on November 12th of 2013, when we came in and made an amendment to the cluster subdivision. We went from 16 lots down to 11 lots. We eliminated a through road that we were going to build. This is, there's an existing wooden road on the property, and we had a design for a road to come all the way through, and at that time, we eliminated that. And I have, you probably have to share these a little bit, but this is just a reduced copy of the last approval, which basically, I highlighted the areas of change that were requested from the board.
Yeah, if you have an extra one. Thank you. You got it in your hand, I'll take one. Thank you.
That plan I just gave you represents the last approval that we got in November. And I've highlighted the areas that we are requesting to change. One of them would be that we want to eliminate a lot on the lake. We have five cluster lots along the lake, we want to go back to four cluster lots. And the one that we are eliminating had about 90 feet of waterfrontage in it, because the Shoreland Protection Act, and currently, as it stands today, you're supposed to have 150 feet of, of frontage, whether you have sewer or not. Back when we started the cluster subdivision, it allowed, if you were on municipal sewer, it allowed you to, to develop it per local regulations. So, what we did, based on the cluster, was we had a total amount of waterfrontage that would allow five lots, but we clustered them. And through the process, that one lot only had like 94, 95 feet of, of frontage. And so, this is going to kind of bring it back into conformance with state regulations, because the four lots that will be on the waterfront now all would have a minimum of 150 feet of frontage.
Sewered or septic? Would they be sewed or septic?
Septic. We're on sewer.
Sewer.
Yeah, we're on sewer.
Leanardry comes through there?
That's right, yeah. As part of that process of eliminating that lot, we have, we're requesting to reduce the length of this road. We had it come out into this area here, and you can see it on the plan, it goes past Lot 8 and Lot 4, and the turnaround is in this area here. And we want to pull it back, they don't want to cut the trees in there. That's a very nice woods road that comes through there. This is a very nice... This is a very nice, open area that's basically green space, and it was going to take a lot of work of grading, cutting trees, and building. So the Remingtons have requested to pull that, that road back. We've reviewed that with, with Public Works and the fire department, they don't have any issue with that. The other revision is that on your plan, we show a short road coming in here with a Y turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
It supports three lots. We want to eliminate that altogether. There's already a road that goes sewer here, so the road that's in there now will serve us one of the lots, and we have two driveways with given road frontage on Pendleton Road. Again, we've reviewed those with Public Works. That'll allow us to eliminate another road, another maintenance, another plowing. We will continue to bring the sewer in, we're going to extend the sewer in and into the lots, and as the staff report will indicate, we need to indicate the easements on the plan for that. So what happens is that, I'll give you this plan, which I've highlighted, which shows you the changes that you can look at relative to the last approval. And that's the same plan as I have up on the board, and I highlighted those changes.
That's this one, right? It should be.
Is that the same plan that came in the package?
It should be.
Yes. This is the same plan that came in the package. This one.
The one I'm looking at right now?
That's correct, but I just highlighted.
Okay.
Relative to the, the, maybe it'd be a little easier to understand. When we eliminate that middle lot, that lot two, we make adjustments to lot.
You can hand that up on that side.
We continue.
Yeah, if I could. Thank you.
I always forget the chairman.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Who's going to share?
We eliminate lot two, but we keep the lot number two, so we have lots one, two, three, four, and then it goes to six, seven, and eight. And what happens is we amend these three lots in here in shape and size to get the frontages.
Basically.
Right? And that's highlighted on the plan I gave you. This now reduces us from, from eleven to ten lots. Originally had fifteen lots in the cluster subdivision. Yeah, you know, it'll be certainly far less disturbance to the, the natural environment that's out there, allows that open, big open space there to remain as it is. I think it's a much better layout.
Is this road that extends from the Wentworth Cove Road that you've highlighted here, is that built to city standards?
No, it's a private road. It's built to your cluster standards for road design. We had a road design for that, yes.
Oh, it's built to the cluster, so.
Yes.
Okay.
We, let's put it this way, it was built to an approved standard through the planning process under the cluster. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I know I've been in here a number of times on this project. I personally feel that the waterfront area is a much better layout eliminating that lot.
Yeah, it's, it's just unusual to have a developer wanting to eliminate a waterfront lot.
Well, personally, I think it had an impact on the ability to sell. I mean, you know, you, the house that he built on lot one, with, with what they're asking for that property, with that small lot right beside it, I think that had a major impact.
Ah.
That, that's my personal opinion. I, I think it's a much better layout.
Now, given, given that this property, he has it advertised. The, the new owner could come back in and requesting a, a, a totally different site plan for this development, couldn't he?
The new owner of the entire development?
Yeah.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, that is true, but he would be bound to the agreement that, that Mr. Remington has signed with the city of Laconia. And that means that there'll be no more than fifteen lots out there, number one, in that, that condition of, that he had, that, that development agreement he signed with the city.
But given that, he could come back in and rearrange this thing again.
Good.
You're like a real estate agent, they keep selling the same house.
I feel the same way.
Help me with this. What impact does a future owner's ability to come back in and change this have on this application? I mean, is there something about this application that gives him a, a newfound ability to do that? Any new owner could come back and do that.
Anybody could do that.
So it's like.
Yeah, I was just concerned, thinking that there had been a agreement between the city and Mr. Remington as, as to the number of lots and things like that, rather, the new owner has the opportunity. I'm just thinking that we may see this again.
It's a possibility. I don't think you're going to, but it's a possibility.
This doesn't change any of the conditions of the prior approval, it, it just reduces the, the number of lots and brings it more conforming into, well, I think we already said that, okay?
Well, I think every, every amendment we've made has given more protection to that area out there, that open space.
If there's no more questions, the applicant, the staff?
The reconfiguration of the road and the elimination of the road over on the western side here actually allows for a fair amount, less pavement and roadway construction, which does add more protection for the, for the natural space in the pretty closely nearby wetland areas. We would recommend approval, noting that all previous conditions of approval still apply. It is also subject to that development agreement that we mentioned. There are a couple of plan revisions, a couple of notes that we need added about some sewer easements, a couple of changes or corrections to a butter information, nothing, nothing really big. So with that, we would recommend approval.
And fire, they concur, fight upon.
Yep, the fire department commented, they're fine with the, the hammerhead situation.
I know we talked about that.
Right.
Six months ago, I think, I'm not sure.
The, the only thing that I need to add is that, that in order to finally, you have some deadlines in there, and I'm not sure I can meet the deadline on the final plan, because under my license, I have to monument all these changes and take all those pins out that were there, and I don't know if I can do it before bad weather comes in here. And, and I can't put a plan on record without the monumentation in there, by law, under my license.
When do you need it? How long do you need?
Well, I, it, depending on weather, I might have to wait till spring to monument this thing, I just don't know. It's not something that, it, it takes some time.
Which date do you want changed, then, of the four?
Unfortunately, I don't.
So some, so Steve, I'm sorry, I thought I made changes to the dates, but they're actually wrong. The plan revision will actually be December first, two thousand and fifteen.
Plan line says the fifteenth, November.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's incorrect.
Oh, okay.
I thought I updated it from the last.
Which should be?
December first.
A is December first of two thousand and sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yep.
The, the plan revision is a no problem.
Yep.
Site improvement security, is that going to be, I don't think we even got an estimate, but we'll have to work that out with Public, I mean, with Public Works?
Yep.
For the, the sewer extension, is that the?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't see that as, as a major issue. The Mylar is, is the issue that I have, because if I don't get the pin set by December first, I can't make the Mylar, I can't get it in here.
So what date do you want?
If we push it to January, or do you need like April?
Well, I would prefer April, I'm going to try to get it in here before.
Probably May, really.
That weather, but I don't want to keep coming back and bothering the board.
July, I mean, is July, okay?
Huh?
July, I mean, whether it's April or July, I mean, I'm not sure.
April, July, either one. I'm going to do my best to get it done before then, but.
Is there a problem with that, with those dates?
Um, no. No?
It's only two months, three months.
They want an extension to, to a date that's mutually agreeable.
If he gets, we got a spring storm, then, you know, then you pushed out another month, in time you do your Voodoo.
June, June would be fine. May or June. I, I, no way I'm, it's going to be that bad that.
June what? June one?
Whatever your, your, your.
Yeah, first, it'll be the first planning board meeting in June.
Which is June seventh. So I will read off all of those dates for you here.
Okay.
So A, plan revision, will be December first, two thousand and fifteen. B, site improvement security, will actually be January fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
January fifth?
Yep, two thousand and sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
The Mylar and final plans, if you're fine with June.
Take it and run, Steve.
That will be June seventh, two thousand and sixteen. And then the completion.
I think the completion date's fine.
Will be, well, if we do it a year from now, it'll be December sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
Because the completion isn't for a construction, the completion is just for the, the plan, right?
No. Completion of the project, isn't it?
I don't know, we have some, part of our, our agreement with the city is there's some things that kick in in terms of the selling of lots and, and building to go in a phase, things, too. So I'm not sure how that relates to that.
I'm not sure either.
Would it be fair to say an extension to June two thousand and sixteen would work?
I think setting the completion at December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, and if there are extensions needed, having him come back and request those would be appropriate.
Now, the comments that you had made, Brandy, about changes, are those incorporated in these documents that we have in front of us?
Yes. All of the plan revisions that were requested by the departments as part of the technical review process are included under section two, plan revisions.
Oh, okay.
So with, with any motion, those, you know, as long as you made note of it, those would be included with the approval as a condition.
Okay. Great. Then the next step is a butters. Are there any butters to this property that would like to speak to the board at this time?
December two thousand and sixteen.
No? Are there any other taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the board at this time? You? Then I close the public hearing at seven-thirty-one. Now, we can go into discussion before we get to a motion, if anyone would like to discuss anything before we get into the formalized motion. Yes, sir.
Did we skip number five, or is that just a misprint?
Five? Yep, that's a misprint.
So five, so there are only five?
So Esvelt will become number five?
Yep. Thank you for catching that.
Question, I have a question. Yeah, the question that we have is December sixteenth completion, two thousand and sixteen? December sixteenth?
December sixth.
December sixth, okay. And the applicant's fine with the changes that have been made and everything?
Yes, I mean, it's, you mean the plan changes?
Yeah. Okay. Ham, is that a question?
Uh, no, it's just.
Wave and it fly away?
It flies.
Oh, okay. Then we can proceed to a motion, if there would like to be a motion.
I make the motion, I'll be approved. Application, PL, two thousand and fifteen, zero one, zero nine, issue as amended to include project completion date of twelve one fifteen, plan revision, that is, twelve one fifteen, site security, one five, two thousand and sixteen, Mylar final plans, June seventh, two thousand and fifteen.
Sixteen.
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 Sixteen, okay, and, and completion date of December sixth, two thousand and sixteen. And to amend page three of three, as the ads built being item number five, to include all the plan revisions, A through.
E.
E.
And then three and four.
And then, of course, four and five.
Okay.
Three, four, and five.
Super. Is there a second to this? I'll second it. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Do you now call the question? All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Huh?
This is going to be right here.
Steve, you realize you have to, next time, you have to figure out how to be first again.
I already know how to do it now. It's like after forty years, I learned something.
Thank you very much.
I think you know quite a bit, Steve, you know quite a bit, well, come down, play yourself.
Ladies and, uh, the next, it's not a continued public hearing, it is a public hearing. It's for the amendment to Article three of the zoning code regarding off-street parking and loading requirements, driveway and access. And I open the public hearing at, oh, this is very good, seven-thirty-five. We don't have a digital clock here, David. The council won't put a digital clock here yet, not in the budget. Okay, this one is, it's the municipal request, and so Shanna, would you make a presentation?
Yep, so the zoning task force was approached several months ago, actually, back probably last winter by the Public Works Department, because our existing accessible spaces requirements and the parking portion of the zoning ordinance was out of date according to the federal ADA standards. So what this is, is updating our off-street parking and loading requirements to include language regarding accessible spaces consistent with the federal standards. I can go through it point by point if folks want.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The, I know, I know this paraphrases the federal, but the exceptions is what we're doing is something different? The exceptions on, on the, on the federal standards, that's on the back sheet?
So, um, I think.
I'm fine, but I just don't know if that's, that's the difference, okay.
Yes, so, before, um, at the ZTF, there was a lot of discussion regarding the impact to small property owners of one parking space, for maybe four or five parking spaces on a very small business, one of them having to be required to be handicapped accessible. And so we did put in the exception under D, and that would have to be D one, not just D dot, one, two, and three, that parking lots that have four or fewer total spaces need not designate an accessible space with a sign. And I know Luke did check with folks at the state DOT, and they were okay with that exception. So that was, that is one that is a little outside of the federal standards, but within keeping with, with how DOT, state DOT interpreted them.
Why did you pick the number four?
I think in discussion, that was the number that was landed on by the zoning task force as really exemplifying the small business. So really, it's dimensions of the space itself, and then how many spaces need to be required. Some of the language was changed as well versus instead of handicap their accessible spaces, van accessible spaces, things like that, so. This is the public hearing for this. The, there was a notice, a legal notice in the newspaper regarding this. This is a recommendation from the ZTF, so our job tonight is to recommend this language to the city council, to hear from the public, and then to recommend this language to the city council.
And the city council has the option, if they want to use our public hearing, or they could elect to have a public hearing of their own.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Okay. Then let's hear from the, there, and any taxpayer in the city of Laconia is a butter to this. So is there anyone from, that would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at seven-thirty-nine. Then the, it's open for discussion, yes, Charlie?
I just have a question. Shanna, can you tell me what the length of a parking space is on our streets? Not the ones that run along the curb, but the ones that come out into the street?
Yep, so a typical space within a parking lot is nine by nineteen. Give me a second, and I can tell you there are certain.
Like on Main Street? Let's figure out Main Street in front of, like, with, with, or the private shop.
Yep. Give me a sec.
This is a parallel.
No.
Or a diagonal width.
He wants the width.
The width.
The width and the length of the diagonal.
Of the diagonal.
Um, let's see. Parking areas.
I think it's nineteen on the shot length of the diagonal. And it's one mile is taller than the other, so it would have to be the shot length of that.
Is it in?
This, this is gonna make it 19 feet out into the street.
Standard parking space shall contain rectangular area at least 19, 19 by 9.
Each standard parking space shall contain a rectangular area of 19 feet in length. So, that would mean it would come out 19 feet, right?
No.
Doesn't mean that?
Length would be the distance along the curb. But this is in a, this is in a parking lot.
This says night, I know, but I'm asking on the street.
So, you got it?
She's looking it up.
No, I didn't know that, I just, I'm just throwing that out there.
So, each standard parking space shall contain a rectangular area at least 19 feet in length and 9 feet in width, except where the spaces are located parallel to the travel aisles, which is the, the parallel on-street parking. The length shall be increased to 22 feet.
22 by 9.
22 by 9, yep.
That's in parking lots?
Nope.
Nope, that's on the street.
It's on the street.
It's in, it's in either one.
So, there'll be, so all of our parking spaces that are not parallel with the, the curb, but that come out into the street are gonna be extended to 22 feet?
22 feet. Now, there are angled parking spaces as well.
I guess that's what I'm thinking about, is angled.
Yeah. So, angled, um, let's see.
You mean like, on the Main Street here, when they go in like that?
Yeah, I guess that's at an angle. Or Lakeside Avenue.
Yeah. I would think that that 19 is on the short length of that line.
I don't know.
Cause it'd be two, the two lines are parallel, but it's at an angle, so one would be longer than the other, I would think it'd be, uh, be, by definition, it should be the shorter line, that's the 19 feet, meaning the other line is probably much, is longer to whatever that defaults to. I don't know.
So, I know for parallel, I think for parallel parking spaces, the dimension is 19 as well, but there is a way that Public Works measures that. And Luke showed me at one point, it's actually a measurement from, by drawing a line, an additional line outside of the lines that demarcate the, the parking spaces, and measuring from that line to the end of the parking stall. So, um-
So, straight out?
Yeah, to form a triangle, exactly.
Can I do a triangle?
Yes.
So, if the parallel, if the angled parking-
Those two lines would be the same length, then, yeah.
All right, if the angled parking goes like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The 19 feet is actually measured-
From the curb to the other.
That way.
Right.
Straight out.
Yep.
Yep.
So, the 19 feet would go at the end of those lines, or past them?
Yeah, so that, so the, so the angled parking would actually have to, where, if this was 19 feet, if this was 19 feet, then the angled line would have to start back here and go up to the curb.
So, what effect, that's along a parking stall?
Yeah.
So, all, so, I guess my question is, is, so is that what we have now in the city?
I do not now.
In city street parking?
I do not now.
It doesn't seem like it to me, but I don't know.
I know that-
Does affect that, would this make that become a necessity if this passes?
So, the caveat is that the city is exempt from its own regulations.
Okay.
Um, I can tell you that on the street redesigns that I have been a part of, the DPW has made every effort to meet these standards. Um, and they, and they have. I don't know about parking spaces that have been in existence for 30 years.
Like Main Street?
Like Main Street.
Because, uh, my question is that if we did this on Main Street, uh, we would probably lose a site, one line, one side of the street would not be able to have parking?
So, the entire zoning ordinance, any change in it is not retroactive. So, anything in existence at the time of the change is grandfathered, so this would apply to only new parking spaces moving forward.
Private or public?
Both, well, again, pu, the city's exempt from its own ordinance, so for the majority, it would be private. The city strives to meet the ordinance, so it would apply to public as well, as best as we can.
But this is only, the change is only in regards to accessible spaces. So, those dimensions, we just-
Oh, I was reading the top one, it says standard parking space.
Yep, that's existing.
That's all gonna stay.
That's existing, that's how it is right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So, any, everything that is, it is, uh, we just gave you from the start of 23547, starts with A, that's staying the same. B is being struck out, removed, and being replaced by everything that's in red. And that's the accessible, rather than spaces for handicap.
Any other, uh, questions or concerns or discussion?
Can you not build spaces for handicap?
If you have less, according to our new rules and regs, if you have a business with a lot that requires less than four parking spaces.
Okay.
And the parking requirements are based on the square footage of your structure.
So, this is only parking for businesses?
Um, yes.
Okay.
So, this-
And multifamily.
Can I just clear?
So, if, if, if I can convert a single family to a multifamily, I need to now have the additional five feet of space? Oh, unless I have, unless it's-
Less than four.
Less than four units.
Um, no.
Or four parking spaces.
Right, right, exactly, yes, yeah.
Need one space per unit? Is that a requirement?
Um, it's one and a half for multifamily.
One and a half per unit.
And you round up?
I think they still, I think they still need to provide a space that's accessible, they just don't have to put a sign, they don't have to designate it, which means that anyone can park there.
Mm-hmm.
So, how's it accessible?
It's, it's, it's built to the spec, the specifications.
It has that five foot-
But if anybody can park there, I guess it sucks being you if you didn't get your car there first.
That's right.
So, if you convert, you don't have to have one accessible space, or you do have to have one?
So, if you have a multifamily that you've got so many units in it, that you need more than four parking spaces, then, yes, you would need to build one of those spaces to the dimensions.
Okay.
Yep.
Or for any multifamily, that's more than three units? Or three units or more?
Right, right.
So, more than two units, really? Wow.
That's, but this is federal mandate, right?
It is.
Okay.
But these exceptions aren't.
That's right.
So, you could change that exception?
To require anyone, the exception is allowing these small businesses and small multifamilies not to have to provide it. So, if we remove that exception, it would-
I mean, they would have to comply too?
If they hadn't.
I, I wasn't suggesting removing the exception, but maybe looking at the impact of that.
Is there a例外?
Yeah, I was thinking that, I mean, that's, how many multifamilies are under two, or more than two units? I think that affects just about all of them.
Yeah, to be honest with you, a lot of those smaller multifamilies, they have driveways and such that-
You wouldn't be able to do it anyway.
This, no, that, that they, they do have the space. So, a lot of the smaller multifamilies probably do have the space because they have driveway space, they're not, they're not building parking lots. They have driveway space that meets these dimensional requirements without any infrastructure changes.
Okay.
It's when you start getting into the, the larger multifamilies, like, for example, the FW Web reconstruction, they were required to put in a number of handicap parking spaces in a parking lot style.
Now, I'm, I'm correct that this is a zoning change, and so, if a property owner had a reason to want to deviate, they could, uh, go before the ZBA? And the ZBA would have the authority to-
Correct.
To make their decision.
Yep, and again, this is just, is just on things moving forward, so it doesn't apply to any of the existing multifamilies out there. Any multifamily conversion needs to come to the planning board, um, and I'll ask some of my older members, when was the last time we had a multifamily conversion?
I don't remember.
Not very often, so, most of them that are in place have been there forever and remain in place, so.
What's considered multifamily, two or more?
Three.
Three or more.
Three or more?
Yep.
Does that affect any multifamily, then? Okay.
Any other, uh, this is all good, because the devil's always in the details, and to talk the details out like this is, it's very, very good. Uh, any other points for discussion? Then what I would like to do is, is ask for a motion to adopt these changes, uh, and recommend to the city council that, uh, they be approved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, raise your right hand if you're in approval. Uh, if you're not, raise your left hand. Everyone voted, uh, in agreement. Is there any, uh, oh, that's okay.
I'm raising my left hand in protest, my right hand hurts.
These city councils, good gosh. Uh, okay, then it passes unanimously, uh, and the request will go to the city council for the, for their, uh, approval.
I have a quick question, what happens if we ignore the fed, federal mandate? What's gonna happen?
Um-
We don't have to comply with our own regs, so.
Um, I know that the City of Concord has, had ignored, um, ADA mandates for a very long time, um, and they were threatened with a lawsuit. I don't know if the lawsuit actually got filed, or if they settled and decided that they would start applying them, but, um, there's, there is that, that risk.
Okay, I don't know what the, what the outcome could be.
Yep.
Excellent, then, let's, uh, moving on to your agenda, uh, public hearing application, PL 2015-0120, SU 12 through 16, Charles Street, uh, proposal to abandon a right-of-way between the two properties to change boundary lines. Uh, does the staff, uh, represent that this application is complete, ready for public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Could I have a motion to accept the application for public hearing? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, I call the question, all those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? Message passes unanimously. I'm sorry to confuse you, David. I'm not really. Then, uh, it's accepted, then I'll open the public hearing at, uh, 2:51, 7:51, and we'll first ask the applicant to present.
I'm Attorney Phil Bureard, I'm here with Michael Little and Gordon Sandborn. Um, they are two abutting property owners on either side of a 20-foot passway. Our title was quieted in the Belknap County Superior Court by Mr. Middle, uh, Mr. Little of this, uh, 20-foot passway, uh, and we're here tonight because we would like to do a boundary line adjustment between the two owners, so that the orange portion that you see on the plan would be added to Mr. Little's property. He has, uh, no street frontage at all at this time. And the other balance, uh, seven feet would be added to Mr. Sandborn's property. Um, these are, um, uh, non-conforming lots, and this subdivision makes it more conforming. These are the smaller lots in an older neighborhood of the city. Um, we have read the, um, staff report and agree with, uh, everything, uh, that's in it. This is a relatively straightforward matter. If there's any questions at all, I know you've got plenty to do here, so.
Any questions of the applicant at this time?
Just so I understand, so the orange portion-
Was it 17 feet?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
That's, same thing that we-
Yeah. So, sir, the, there's an existing right-of-way that-
That was in questionable ownership.
Of questionable ownership.
That we quieted in the Superior Court in Mr. Little's name.
Okay, so, the, the, this question, right-of-way is now being split between the two property owners?
Correct.
Allowing for what was a landlocked building, residents to now have frontage on Charles Street?
Well, Mr. Sandborn has frontage on Charles Street.
I don't.
Mr. Little doesn't.
Well, I do now.
Well, he would with this.
Mr. Sandborn is located here. Mr. Sandborn's located here on this lot. Mr. Little is located up on this lot.
This is Mr. Little's house right here.
And that goes with the orange?
This is the street. And then this is Mr. Sandborn's house? It's the same exact, yeah.
So, was a, Phil, was a right-of-way, and then turning into ownership rather than a right-of-way, and so, both parties are sort of whole, I guess, is that the blue goes to one, one, goes to one party?
He can't hear you.
And the other goes to the other party?
Correct.
Okay.
Gordon, he just said the blue goes to you and the orange goes to Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, staff?
Yep, we have no problem with this. Fire department, Public Works, Sewer Department have no concerns. We are asking that street monuments be escrowed prior to recording and placed prior to as-built.
Is that in the, uh, that's all in the application here?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Then, uh, are there any butters that would like to address the board at this time? Any members of the general public, taxpayers of Laconia wish to address the board on this subject at this time?
So, this would be stay, if I sell the house to my son, it would still, my passes down to my son and my daughter and my granddaughter?
Absolutely. It's, that blue part becomes part of your D.
Like in title insurance, like-
Yeah, title insurance, yeah.
Is there a driveway there now?
Yes.
Oh, there is, okay, I'm just trying to find it on the map.
Yeah, just, it was questionable ownership, and so, we quieted title and just wanted-
So, it's a flag lot?
It will be.
It will be, okay.
Yes.
Seeing no, uh, members of the taxpayers of Laconia wish to talk, uh, close the public hearing at 7:55, and open the, uh, this to discussion of the board? Is there any discussion before we move to motion? Seeing none, I'll, uh, ask, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, PL 2015, yeah, 2015, 012, 0SU. Why is that number so familiar?
This guy, and this is the driveway.
I think that was used in the last application.
No.
It wasn't the same numbers, I thought I said that just a minute ago.
The last application is the Pendleton, which was 0109.
Okay, 010, okay, so, thank you for correcting that.
0120, yep.
And, uh, so I make a motion to approve that app, this application in regards to the lot line adjustment.
Do we need to state the dates?
Yes.
Plan revision on December 1, 2015, site improvement not applicable, mylar and final plans, January 5, 2016, and completion December 6, 2016. Is that what you're requesting, Phil?
It's fine, yes. So, that's the motion?
Four.
Yeah.
Gotta go through it.
Well, okay. And all the conditions, uh, for A through D, uh, to be entered into the record?
Condition 2 or 3.
Yeah, that's plan revision, that's, other conditions, federal permits shall be in place at that. So.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Someone's gonna, you know, contest this, and-
It was kinda surprising.
Ah, the big guns are here.
No, 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 the lot.
Yes.
How old is he?
Uh, six.
Six, okay.
Is he making the presentation?
Yeah, he'll be making the presentation. That way you can billable hours, right? There you go.
Looks like zero dad, I think, huh?
Gives it self-frontage, makes it, I don't know that it's-
Okay, we'll move on now to, uh, public hearing number three, application PL 2015-0121 SP amendment. This is for the Route 106, 107, Alilak Valley Estates, proposal to amend the unit's style to have a small cape. And the applicant is represented by John Rokee, Rokee Consulting, Senior.
I was here way back when, when Larry Baldi still-
I'm sorry, the board needs to accept the application. Please.
Oh, okay, we can do, uh, we can do that, thank you very much. Uh, does the staff represent the application is complete and ready for public hearing?
It is.
And could I have a motion to accept the-
Motion or accept.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion is accepted. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Never fear to interject when we're going off track.
You're all set.
Then I will open the public hearing at 7:59. And now, Mr. Rokee, Senior.
Thank you. I actually came before you guys with this project years ago, like 2008, when Larry Baldi still owned the property. And we were asking for a unit style change to include Colonials, too. And the board was not interested in the Colonial style. The cape was kind of, the cape was something that probably would have been okay even back then. But we withdrew the application. Larry lost it. Brady Sullivan is currently building the project right now. And kind of along the lines of what the site up on, and we're across from Cumberland Farms, where they've done a couple of unit style changes to mix it up a little bit and give a little better product variety. We're asking to have the ranch styles that are approved right now, and we want to add in the cape that we're showing here, showing you on this plan as an option on the site. It's definitely still right along the lines of the affordable housing. It fits in with the, it fits in with the other product that's going to be in there. It gives, it just gives a good mix for the project. It makes, it would make it look a lot nicer in the end, too, rather than having the exact same house for every single house in the development.
Do you have any feel what the percentage would be between the two?
It's going to end up being probably, I don't want to say 50/50, but I think there's going to be a decent amount of the capes that get built. It just gives a second level and it frees it up a little bit on the layout. A lot of, if it's, if it's older people, they may not opt for the second story. They may want everything on the ranch level, like the regular, the regular approved style is going to be. So, the, the cape style is actually a much smaller footprint, too, because the overall square footage doesn't get a lot bigger. So, the, it's a smaller footprint. And if you remember these lots, they were like 5,000 square foot lots. So, it just opens up a lot of room where, where they were going to be kind of jammed right up against each other with the ranch styles. This will open it up to, you know, instead of being 30 feet apart, they might get to 40 feet apart. So.
So, the market would delineate the ratio, I guess.
Yeah.
Have they got any of the ranch styles built yet? Have they built any of the ranch styles?
Yes. Yeah, the three, the three houses that you see out there today on John Drive are the original approved ranch styles.
Are they garage, still garage under?
They can be. A lot of them, a lot of them won't be. I mean, it varies, it varies depending upon the terrain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, these might be garage under?
Yeah, some of these might end up being garage unders. Even with the ranch style, there's probably going to be some garage unders.
So, the call for the, for the ranch style was primarily for people who may have problems getting in and out of a house with bad steps and-
The original, the original approval was the manufactured housing cluster ordinance, which doesn't exist anymore. And that was going to be just straight up, you know, double-wide trailers essentially. And everything has kind of evolved since then. So.
But I mean, the market reason for the ranch-
The market reason is, yeah, everything's on the same level. You don't, you don't have to do stairs.
Okay. Staff?
So, we reviewed the application, and I went back and looked at the previous application to change the unit style. And this is a pretty different proposal. The square footage of this unit style stays in about the same range as the previously approved ranch style. The price point will also be in about the same range as the ranch style. So, really, what it does is allow for more options for the buyer, more options for the developer, but still keeping with the intention of the original approval. So, we would recommend approval to allow this second unit style. One plan revision is required. The building codes are required that all habitable rooms must have a floor area of not less than 70 square feet, and those habitable rooms must be not less than seven feet in any horizontal dimensions. So, basically, the smallest room you can have is seven by 10, minimum. The bathroom on the first floor is seven by like nine and three quarters. So, that is going to be required to be enlarged to be at a minimum seven by 10. That is the only plan revision that we would require. All other conditions from previous approvals still apply, remain in effect. This would just be allowing a little bit more flexibility.
Those requirements are based on the type of funding or low-cost housing, whatever it's called?
Those conditions are based on the manufacturer, on the cluster approval originally years ago.
And that was a certain square feet or whatever it is.
That was a certain housing style.
Was it true?
Is a bathroom considered a habitable room?
It is. I found that out.
Moving on.
The only room, the only room that does not apply to, for whatever reason, is the kitchen.
So, that 70 square feet is building code separate from the, from the planning board requirements of the original approval?
Yeah.
So, it's a building code, it's not necessarily because of the type of project he's had?
Yes, yes. It's just building code. Yep, we just wanted to note it. So.
And I talked to the architect about the, about the notice of decision, and he's like, that's, that's fine. He can easily make the, make the change. So.
Okay. Then are there any abutters that would like to address the board? Any member of the general public that would like, Laconia taxpayers would like to address the board?
He's playing a video game with the members.
Yeah, no, he's not a taxpayer. I think his father probably pays everything. It's, then I'll close the public hearing at five minutes past eight. Any discussion before we move to a motion? Seeing none, I'll request a motion.
I'll move that, that application, PL 2015-21, or 0121, SP amendment be approved, subject to conditions 1, 2, A through D, 3, 4, A through E, 5, A and B, 6, A and B, I'm sorry, A, B, F.
A through H.
Right. So, again, it's number 6, A through H, and then number 7 as.
Outstanding. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I get a break now. Like, seeing you just about every month here for a while, and I think I'm off for a little bit now.
Well, we're going to-
Never know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, by the way, I think we actually broke ground on the parking lot today from the meeting last week. So.
Oh, Mr. Sees Taxi?
Yep, yep. I think they started digging today. So.
Excellent.
Outstanding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sees Taxi.
Yeah.
Been there, done that.
Yeah. We have no applications to accept under new business. Let's see, we can put it under new business, old business, new business. I'd like to, maybe this is a good point about, we held a special meeting last week through this notification process that we were discussing. And whenever we have a situation like that, I'd like to us to revisit lessons learned. Is there anything that we should change to our procedures or way of doing notifications?
Me to the board or to?
To abutters. I first thought that why don't we require the, that green ticket thing to be returned to the city, so that we would know that the abutters actually received the notice. And Kalina did our research for us as to what that would cost. But then, then I, in discussions with some board members and Chander, I thought that that was not a good idea, because what it would require, any abutter that receive this notice, they would, and they were in whom? They would have to go to the post office during post office hours and pick up a certified letter.
Well, let me go back. What was the, what was the evidence? You had a printout of that mailing and how it got there and all that. And so, that showed that it went there, probably, more than likely, went there. I don't know if that would suffice. I mean, I would think it would.
Well, a point, a point, a point to that was that that did not firmly indicate that the abutter actually received it. It indicated that the post office told us that they delivered it.
I'd like to speak on that for a second.
Yes.
I'm a neighbor of Dean Anson.
Yes.
I live together under the pond.
Yeah.
And he sent me a certified letter.
Exactly.
Certified letter. It came right to my house. The post office truck drove up to my driveway, rang the bell, and I had to sign for it.
Exactly.
So, we did the right thing. That's why I asked Chander about the certifies. When you get a certified, you have to sign for it. Now, whether you put it on your refrigerator and forgot about it, that's your problem. And Meredith does the same thing. I know that for a fact, because my wife does it. And I have to check to make sure that it's certified, signed for. Otherwise, they don't have it, they don't have it as part of the meeting.
Does the way that we, our system now, does it require an actual signature?
It does not.
It does not.
So, what happens if they try to mail it? You would get it back. Is that what you think?
Correct. Yep.
Even though it's certified?
Right. So, they, they will attempt to deliver it like three times, I believe. And if, after the third attempt, well, if there's no, there's a bunch of different reasons why they can't deliver it, but they will, we have gotten them back with attempt one, attempt two, attempt three. Maybe the wrong address. It may not have a mail receptacle, blah, 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 blah. But.
What do we do when we get them back?
We keep them in, as part of the file. If that person did come forward and did have problem, you know, had some issues or problems, we would show them, yes, in fact, you did not get the certified receipt. And for whatever reason, and they would be able to take that with them to court if they wanted to appeal it. It does not happen too often. I mean, it happens, every month, we get return mail?
Well, even if they don't, you're sort of in the same position if they don't pick up their certified mail, as we were with Mr. Sees. The legal analysis doesn't change. They can't go in and say, I didn't get the notice. So, it's, that doesn't change.
I don't know.
Yeah. And it makes it, it makes it more expensive for everybody. And I think I said this, but I raised that issue because I believe that those folks who have been watching that property forever actually didn't get notice. And I thought they had to have an opportunity to be heard. I wasn't faulting the process itself or how we go about sending out our notices. I was concerned about a particular issue and somebody, and people having the opportunity to be heard. That's all of it.
Do you think we should change our procedure? Because to me, it's very unfair that after the planning board has taken action and done a formal notice, that, and the applicant has begun working against it, that somebody could raise their hand, and we have to go back in. And if we, if we then did a cease and desist, it has a tremendous negative, adverse effect on the applicant. So, I'm trying, I'm trying to think, is there something that we should do to change things? Yesterday?
If we vote to change it, we vote as a majority. But I know in my particular case, I do not have a mail receptacle in front of my house. I have a P.O. box. And Dean Anson probably knows that I don't have a mail receptacle in front of my house. So, he sent me a certified. And the certified came right to my house, and someone had to be there to sign it. That's why I just want everybody to know what goes on in the city of Laconia.
And I don't know what alternative to a registered letter there is. But you do have to remember that a good deal of the population of this city are in and out. They're transitional.
Seasonal.
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 Right.
And as a result, even a registered letter isn't, isn't going to do it. And I don't, and we've had this problem for years with condos and things, when you're trying to get whoever represents the condo association to come to, to come to a meeting, and you can't, they don't even know who it is. Sometimes when you contact the members, they don't know who it is. So, I think our obligation of notification only should go, only needs to go so far for us to meet some sort of obligation.
I agree with that.
And beyond that, it's not, not our problem.
I agree with that. And when we've voted on it, that's what happens.
But also, our agendas are online, and they're posted at three public places.
We do do it at three. We're required to only do two, but we do do it at three. Yep.
And this is the first time this has ever occurred, I believe, under that reason?
That's good enough.
Ever.
What's your comment, Charlie?
Not everybody goes online to look at what's happening in the city, especially if they're property owners and they have no clue what's going on next door. And, you know, as far as the public notices go, unless you're looking for those things, most people aren't looking for them. They're going to miss them. But Don, when you were saying about, and I understand that people move away for the winter, when, I don't know about certified mail, but would it, would it be a problem to send regular mail and certified mail? Because most of those people, I think, would have mail forwarding for when they're gone for the winter. I know everybody I know that goes away for the winter has mail forwarding. So, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, they, there's some responsibility here, or not responsibility, but-
Would those be forwarded?
They should be, yeah.
What we do now would be forwarded.
Yeah.
So, okay, so.
You've had to have negative feedback on this if it was a substantial problem. You've been doing this forever.
It's the first time.
So, in this case, I think in a serious instant, your system works pretty well. That person got heard, and almost got a private hearing just for that person. And you also recognize that this is an abutter that had a need for something to say. So, I'd say the system you've got now worked. You don't have an outpouring of negativity on what you've done for quite a while. So, even in a circumstance where one of the members thought, you know, I think your system worked pretty well. And I think they got a serious amount of commentary and thought towards their, their comments and concerns.
So, if nobody has any suggestion that-
I'm just trying to read you, read you a little bit, Charlie. What's that? What's going on in your mind?
Well, I was, what he was saying has been no problems in the past with the system. I'm not sure.
I didn't say no problems. I said like an outpouring of, you know, like this is, this is really broken.
But we have had outpourings.
Okay.
Over, over the years, I've heard several complaints outside of the board from people who say, geez, they passed that, and I'm an abutter, and nobody told me. I've heard that quite a bit. But it, it coming into the board and affecting something that was taking place, I can't remember in 17 or 18 years that ever happening before.
That I obviously would know. I don't, I don't know if you can do enough to, quite frankly, to notify abutters. I don't, I don't know. We're not a huge city. We're not like New York City. So, maybe, you know, maybe it behooves us to tack something on the door besides, depending on the mail. Actually, literally, somebody just taped it right on the door. I mean, that way, if they miss that, forget it. I mean, you've done-
You're hired.
Well, you know, it's not that big of a city.
Many, many projects that we deal with, Charlie, are like 200 units or something, and the list of abutters is huge.
But those 200 units, like, you're talking about like a condo complex or something like that?
Yeah.
But they have a, they have a central place where they go and get their mail. So, you could, you could put those things there.
And we're only required to notify the association as well in that case. And I just, I just want to reiterate that our legal counsel, so what we do is set by state law. Our legal counsel has advised us really not to stray from that state law very far. We may think we might be doing the right thing by going above and beyond, but once we are outside of the confines of what the law tells us to do, there's, there's lots of gray area there. So.
Then there's the answer.
That was, that was why her recommendation was very strong at the last meeting.
I think, Charlie, we could go down the street with a microphone.
I like, I like the bullhorn effect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you for the discussion. I just wanted to have it because we, and I really appreciate everyone that was able to attend the special meeting and go through it.
I was out of town.
No, 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 that's fine. No, there's a lot of people.
I didn't think there was going to be a meeting. I left.
And you're not appreciated.
There's no rocks being thrown, none at all. In fact, we were surprised that so many were able to, to attend. I just, when something like that happens, I would like us to discuss, is there something that we should change? And if our conclusion is no, then, then that's fine. And the advice of our legal counsel, we'll just leave it alone. I just, I just wanted to bring it up for that discussion. Then, let's see, new business, old business reports, Planning Department?
Yep. I want to pass these out really quickly. I think this is fairly important, so I wanted to let you guys know and provide you with color copies of these plans. This came across my email today. DOT is studying, DOT and DRED, Department of Resource and Economic Development, is studying the state's traveler services and welcome and information centers. The map going around is a map of our welcome and information centers. They're having a meeting December 1st in Concord to garner public input. So, these are facilities that are being used by tourists and customers that may be making their way to Laconia, since tourism is such a huge part of our economy. And the state is really wondering, are these facilities adequate? Are we missing anything? Do they need anything? Are there some that may be closed? I'm happy to, once you take a look at this. If you want to email me any input that you have, I'm happy to pass that on to DOT as well. But because this is such a huge part of the state's economy and our city's economy, I thought this was fairly important. I thought this was fairly important to pass on.
Yeah, right away, I would suggest, because I was involved with that scenic route there years ago.
Scenic byways?
Yeah, and there should be something near the, near the old prison, across the road or something like that, when people, if they're heading north or they're coming through the city, they could stop off and there is a map, which the state would put a little copy or something.
A kiosk.
It talks about, you know, what's in the area, what to visit, and here's this historical building, here's whatever, and here's a, you know, and that kind of stuff. I think it's, it's needed on that road. Across from the, in the area of the prison.
Now, I know in Alton, up the street from Elacoya, there's a scenic pull-off, which is not very scenic because the trees have all grown up, but is there a kiosk there? There is. Okay, so something similar to that is what I'm thinking.
I can't remember what that looks like. Were you talking about F-11 there?
Yeah, it's kind of a covered kiosk, and I think it has like all those little pamphlets and stuff for businesses and attractions and things, like little brochures.
I know in Colbuk, Whuppin' Natty area, they have like a map that's like sealed in plastic. And it tells you a lot about where to go and that kind of thing.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it might, it might be not sufficient for what we want to do, but it could be adequate.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to let you know is the master plan advisory team is meeting this coming Friday at noon. We're going to be talking about the transportation chapter. Lake Region Planning Commission has approached us regarding some funds they have available to help us out with the transportation chapter. So we've scoped out kind of a draft chapter with them, and they'll be moving forward. That's what we'll be talking about with the master plan advisory team. In addition, you probably saw all the maps outside relating to the Plan New Hampshire Charette that was in August. Those maps have come from the draft report that they prepared for us. When we took a look at those maps, we really loved what they did for downtown and Lakeport, but felt that they were a little bit lacking on the Weers map. So we've asked them to come back, and they have agreed to do a small mini charette for just the Weers. It's going to be on the 19th, which is a Thursday, at nine o'clock in the morning. It will go from nine to about 11:30. It will be at the Weers Community Center. We've invited as many of the business owners that participated or expressed interest in participating in the master plan as we could from the Weers. You guys are welcome to come as well to basically relook at those maps that Plan New Hampshire did for us and see if we could get a little bit more robust drawings from them. There was not a lot of kind of sketches. They are sending a team of four. If you'll remember, at the August charette, they sent somewhere between 15 and 20 folks. So this is a smaller team, but I think it'll give us a much better map for that Weers. That said, we should then get the final report from them with all of the maps and all of the write-up probably by mid-December and hopefully be able to bring that to you, well, hopefully at the December planning board meeting. But maybe not, since we're the first Tuesday. But probably mid-December so we can have it for January. I think that's all I have. If there are questions on development projects, I'm happy to answer them. I typically have a list, but we did not get that together in time for tonight, so any other questions about development projects, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Liaison reports of the planning commission. Just a couple of things to bring your attention. The planning commission has provided $70,000 value to Laconia, and, and you might not be aware of it. $20,000 was on the Colonial Theater assessment, and $40,000 was on the Madeira property environmental assessment work through the Brownfields program. And $10,000 came to the city to help on Laconia's natural resource chapter through a Pardo Many times, the people say, you know, what does the planning commission do? And, and this is, and many times, it's not obvious, but this is part of the, their contribution to our city. In addition, there was an article in the paper that I didn't think Shanna got enough credit for, is the transportation alternative grant to the city of, of over $500,000 that she and the department heads made a presentation to the planning commission, the Transportation Advisory Committee, and it ranked four in the state. And that's why we did obtain that level of funding. And that is for the Riverwalk, the sidewalks to the schools, and to contribute it into the Wild Trail, I think, too.
No, no, we ended up having to take the Wild Trail out, but three pieces of the Riverwalk from the end of the City Hall car show, the Church Street, from Church Street to the FW Web, and then from Beacon West behind the Landmark to beyond the Walgreens property. Those are the three Riverwalk pieces. And then sidewalks on the upper half of Winter Street to the Woodland Heights School, and on Opichi Street from Messer to the Middle School.
When do you think these projects will shovel with at the ground?
We've just hired our team, although they don't know it yet. We made the decision just today, and we'll inform them, we have tomorrow off, but probably on Thursday. They then have the winter and part of next summer to do the engineering. It's federal funds, so there's very strict engineering requirements that we need to follow. We are hoping to have shovel in the ground by next fall on some of these projects, with the remainder being finished the summer, the building season of 2017.
Outstanding.
I'd like to say congratulations to you and to the city of Laconia.
Yeah, it's tremendous. It's a tremendous, it'll improve our, our safety and, and appeal tremendously. Conservation Commission, Bill?
Oh, you heard part of it tonight?
Yes.
And if there's anything else that you want to jump in on and add to it?
Yep. So the Conservation Commission, four of the members just went for their annual training at the Association, New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions this Saturday. 270-something Conservation Commission members and staff people attended this training. It was enormous. Very good. They continue to work on the Black Brook geomorphic study and have moved forward with Milfoil, their Milfoil Subcommittee. They have received $2,000 from the Lake Winnipeg Water Show Association to help with Milfoil efforts specific to Black Brook. They're hoping to get that hand-pulling of Black Brook completed this fall. Additional Milfoil work on Pogus Bay and Opichi will occur most likely in the spring.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor?
I wasn't aware that Kefua, or however you pronounce it, had made the application to remove the tree for safety reasons is what they described it. When I spoke at the council meetings last night to make sure that the city was going to do its part to see what it could do to meet the conditions of the arborist report that we had. We have an arborist report. I think there's been some publicity about it and what we needed to do to the sidewalk. And so the city is moving forward on that end despite the application to see what we can do to, or what the cost will be, and if it's even feasible, to preserve that tree out next to Dunkin' Donuts. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? Okay.
I have a question. Are you ready?
Sure.
You talking about removing the asphalt from the little small sidewalk there?
Yeah, reconfiguring the sidewalk or...
Reconfiguring or just removing it, the side, the asphalt? Because it's, because it was always a path there before. And so the curb cut could remain, but the asphalt, if they remove that, wouldn't that be a big part of the...
Charlie, my suggestion was that you stop the sidewalk short of the tree.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know what DPW is going to do that, and I don't make those decisions, but my suggestion was you stop it short of the tree and, and deal with the curb cut there in that way. What, what the final recommendation will be, I don't, I don't know, but...
Well, under site plan regulations, we have to be careful here, too, because there is an application that has started. And, and, but what we can do and what we would do at a later date is require the applicant to engage third parties. And in this case, the requirement would be for a safety, traffic safety, because the applicant is contending that there's a safety issue having that tree there. And that's their contention, and what we do as normal procedure for site plan approval is require third parties, because it's beyond the technical expertise of, of this group to determine, is there a safety issue or not? And so...
The way it's currently laid out. So using that area right there by the tree as an exit out of the property could be a safety problem, the way it's laid out now. So that's...
It's, he is requesting an amendment to his site plan. The site plan requires that that tree remain, and we did approve the entire parking lot configuration. And so what we can do tonight is, is, is put on record through a formal vote that we will require a third-party engineer, traffic engineer, to study the safety issue and come back to us. Then we can also require a, an arborist, an official arborist, to look at that tree and determine what needs to be done to the site plan application in order to, to the as-built, to protect that tree.
Can we do that tonight?
Yeah, when, after we see the application, or put some...
We can do it when we get the application.
Well, the issue is, and we were discussing it, our feelings are, we, we, that would be what we will do, because it is what we always do. When there's technical questions, we require third parties, and that we can save this issue at least a whole month by voting on those two requirements this evening.
I'm, I don't think that, I don't think the application is before us, and I want to be really careful about what we do or don't do. I'm just, and I, I'm reporting this from the city councils, and my role as a liaison. I didn't know about the application when it was, when I spoke to the council last night. I made sure today that we're going forward with the council's request, my request, that we explore the options we have to, to preserve that tree, remove the pavement, trim it down, do whatever we have to do. And we're going to get a report on that at the next council meeting.
From who?
From the administration, from the city manager.
So, so you're going to come back to us and say...
From the city manager, DPW, every, I don't know. Shanna might...
We haven't seen an application, so...
So I don't want to take, I don't want to take...
Just received the application like Friday afternoon, so... Right, so it'll be scheduled before the planning board, and, and, and maybe we don't take a vote tonight, maybe it isn't the right time to take a vote if, if we're going to be moving, if the, I mean, if the council's going to be doing this anyway, then maybe we hold off on that and see what comes of that, and, and then if needed, based on whatever information is found by this avenue, if we still need additional information, we can require it.
Well, we're going to, the council's going to be meeting one more time this month. And so by the next meeting of the planning board, I'll be able to report to you what the status is of everything, and we might try to get a little clarification if we can do anything. I'm very nervous about taking a vote on anything that's not pending before us.
I would agree with that. I think I would agree with that, yeah.
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 So...
Charlie?
I just ask a question. On that site, the, the plan that was approved for the building there and everything, was it this board that recommended that that be an exit and not an entrance, or was that something?
Yes.
So they wanted to have...
It was a site plan approval and with, with the traffic patterns.
But let me clarify, though. The board did not say to the applicant, please make that an exit.
That's what I wanted to know.
What happened was the applicant brought that plan forward, and we did not find error with it.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know.
Have you tried driving out of there?
Yeah.
Isn't that a sight line of problem?
Well, I, I used to drive out of there all the time, David, when there, there was a parking lot there. But I was just, I was just curious about that, if, if it was their, their model, or is that something you required? So, okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
When the, when the, when we, as a planning board, have to address technical issues, traffic studies, traffic safety, environmental impacts, what, we don't have that expertise. And so we require the applicant to fund a third party that, that comes back to us and, and reports on it, and then we act upon that information.
Normally, we ask the applicant of their project, we usually ask them, what's the sight line? Or the engineer tells us this sight line, you know, this is for the sight line or whatever. I'm not sure about that particular project, but we usually ask that question.
See, site plans can't be developed in letters to the editor. They, they, it has to be based on...
I understand that. I understand that, Warren. I'm just, again, I'm just curious if that was something that the board said to that group, you must use that as an exit? Because then it would be on the board, the board's back that, hey, you're the guys that said we had to use that as an exit. So I just wanted to be clear that that was...
But would that site plan...
It's on our bag anyway. They made the proposal, we approved it, so we'll see where that goes.
But the way that parking lot is configured with the sharing of the inn for the Dunkin' Donuts, the, the thought of simply changing them, it, it just won't work.
That's a matter of opinion.
Well, that's why we hired the third party, because you have an opinion, I have an opinion, but we need the technical expertise, and it, it doesn't exist within the council or the planning board.
But they, I, they go out and find that person and hire them?
No, no, no.
We do that.
We do.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, Shanna does that. They pay the bill, but they report back.
I'd feel much better than that. Okay, thank you.
It's a normal thing, too, on, on many large projects, like if the Langley Cove project comes before us and so forth, there'll be several third parties that will be required to report back to us, and then we act on it. We don't necessarily have to do what they say, but if a group of volunteers overrides technical experts, there has to be damn good reason. My only objective of trying to, to move this process forward is that this is going to be a highly discussed topic in the city. And, and the sooner we get to the point of what the applicant can do and can't do, it's better off than having a festering issue like this. We get them every now and then.
Well, you were his applicant. He had no applications.
Right. It has begun. It's, it has been submitted.
We can't vote now for something that's going to take place in the future.
Okay. Okay. It just, I'm an inclusive guy. I want everybody to talk these things out.
And that's what we want to do.
The, the other thing that we have in front of you is the City of Laconia Planning Board Policies, Rules and Procedures. It's an excellent document, needs to be updated. There are many people here that haven't, don't even know that we have this. So what we would like you to do is, is read through it and come back in December, and we can discuss what should be changed or shouldn't be changed, given the experience of the senior members and given the first look see of, of the new people. This is adopted by us. It, it's not a city ordinance, but it is necessary to have it so that it is documented, what we do and how we do it.
So...
So this is homework. It's a little thing with that brown thing on the top.
Multiple choice.
You probably wrote this originally.
Yeah, but I didn't see, I didn't see it in here.
Is it on the packet or is it on the table?
I don't think I have it.
It was on the table.
It was on the table.
Maybe I took one. I never took one.
I don't have one.
Here, that's one.
Yeah.
There, there's one other business thing that I would like to bring up. Our, our city clerk is, city clerk, that's the official title, is trying to standardize procedures between different boards. And one of the issues is the notice of actions. The, it's a formalized document following our decisions here. And the, their request was that other boards have the, have an officer sign these notice of action forms. I did not want to do that, because signing MyLars to go to the registry, they are produced by certified engineers, their stamps are on it. It's reviewed by the staff, but that stamp means that, that is right. And so an officer has always signed those things. I stop by, I sign them, they go over to the registry. The notice of action is really taking our finalized decision, translating it into a document, and it is a legal document, to go to the applicant that says, okay, do this. I, I would not sign those, because I'm not technically qualified to make that determination. They have always been signed by the director of the department. What the city clerk has come down to is that she would like an officer, chairman, vice chairman, or, or secretary, to review them, and then the director would sign them, as they always have been signed. That was an acceptable way for me, because whosoever an officer, I don't feel, should ever be in the position of notarizing in effect that this is the, the actual thing. We don't have, none of us have the technical qualifications.
Is this board-specific, or is this across the, all the boards you're talking about?
Well, we, we, in, in this instance, we have highly technical ones. Well, we, we, in, in this instance, we have highly technical ones.
I understand that, so I'm just saying, is there thoughts across all the boards? Or is this board-specific for the planning board?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, what is your signature mean? Does it mean that you have, you authorized the submission of this document? Or that you reviewed it and it's correct?
What document are you signing?
The, a notice of action. It's the notice of action of this board.
And the notice of action goes on what, our approvals?
It's based on the approval of this board. It is the finalized document.
What is the notice of action related to? Does it go on, we took, we voted to approve a couple of applications tonight. Would the notice of action go on that?
Yes, each.
Would it go on our, our vote to send to the city council the parking changes? What does it go on?
Everything, each item on the agenda that we make a decision on has a notice of decision or a notice of action with any of the conditions listed. It's basically your staff report with any of the changes, and then I sign it, this is a certified record of what the planning board's approval was.
You do that now, right?
I do that now.
Okay.
So it's not attesting to the technical correctness?
You're just attesting to the, to the, that's the document, that's the decision we made.
Yes, but, but it's several pages, and, and it's, it's very detailed, and it is a legal document. It has given the applicant the authority to do what we've decided.
Well, Warren, I don't care what you do, but I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the bad penny that you think it is. I think you're just signing a document, you're just signing what the decision is. But I'm happy with whatever you're comfortable with.
The only thing I have on it is that, where we have such, you know, a lot of information that goes out, and, you know, someone signs it, but they don't read every word and draw every I and cross every T.
You've already read it once.
Who's read it?
In here, but the.
Again, I don't.
Several years from now, it could come back, and whoever signed that, an officer of this board, could be questioned as to, didn't you know what you signed, what did you mean? Legal action could be taken.
We might say 2015, it gets put down 2016, or we might say 2016, but it gets translated into 2015. Who knows?
But any suit or anything would go to the, on the city of Laconia, not on you.
Uh, but you'd be, you'd be sucked right into it.
Yeah. Well, then they should pay for errors and omissions insurance.
Yeah, well, there is, and there's a lot of that.
Where is there?
I think, I, I think you, you sort of look at this more darkly than it, than it really is. But again, just do what's comfortable.
Well, I think what's comfortable, what I'm saying here is, don't sign the damn things. The director continues to sign them as they already have. And, and what I would like to do is to request that this board approve that system, that an officer reviews it, but the director continues to sign the notice of action.
I'll consider it the next meeting, I'm not gonna consider it tonight.
I'll make the motion that we.
There's no motion.
Well, no, no, he can.
I'll make the motion.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna have one.
Except what our chairman has just said.
Yes, well, let's, let's do this discussion, then we'll have that.
Do you mind if I do that before your motion?
I made the motion.
Well, okay, technically, he's made a motion. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion?
There's none, so far.
I guess not.
So maybe I can ask him a second? This motion goes down to.
Okay.
What were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, board chair signed, signed financial documents and all that, and we know you don't have the expertise for that. There should be no worry about signing. I think the real issue, quite honestly, would be what does your signature add to that to affect either accountability or anything? If your signature is just to waste your time to read something in addition, I would say there's no need for it. So it's just a politi, you know, parliotarian thing. So if, why waste the time of a public official if it doesn't add anything to that document?
So why does the clerk need that, that's the question?
She was trying to standardize all boards.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so it's not specific, it's all boards. But why would you need it from this board? That would be my question. I mean, I think it's been going fine, my personal opinion.
Well, that's my opinion also.
I think just some personal inquiry by any member of this board to the city clerk as to what the necessity of that is would be more than adequate to address that issue, and we can all satisfy ourselves. But I don't want to take a vote on anything tonight, I want to go home.
And I would not be concerned at all.
I second that, make a motion adjourned.
No, 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 I wouldn't. This, I consider this a very, very important issue. I am not.
I move to table this issue right now. I move to table it for next discussion, for, for the next meeting. Somebody give me a second, please.
Motion to tables can't be discussed, as I was probably questioning. There's a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll talk about it next time.
All right.
Just think of yourselves, though, in the position of chairman.
No, but you don't have to do it now.
We sign something out all the time.
We don't have to do it, we don't have to adjourn.
No, 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 let's look at the agenda, we have to follow this.
I'm sorry, you guys have to approve minutes?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to approve minutes.
The minutes have been distributed for the October sixth meeting. Is there any correction, additions, changes to be made? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote to approve the minutes of October sixth.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion passes, the minutes are approved. Then we move to the.
Adjournment.
Adjournment. Is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see, I think I'll table it.
Hold on a second.